Okay, we're recording. I am calling the meeting to order of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District. It's a regular meeting. Today is Thursday, August 22, 2019, and the time is 6:30 PM. So, board issues. First, I'll start in saying, we don't have a -- we have a quorum, and also present, I forgot to say, present are Commissioner Harden, myself, Commissioner Hollis standing in for the chair, and Commissioner Hoffmeyer. All the H's are present. So, that's all we need, really. So, we've discussed what we're going to do for tonight, is we'll do the stuff that has to be done, and that is not the kind of things that are not so important that we need all five of us to do. Otherwise, we'll table the other things on the agenda for a potentially meeting next week, and we'll talk about the timing of that. Commissioner Hoffmeyer, do you have any issues?
Nothing bad.
Commissioner Harden?
No, I was wondering about the hot tub. I can get that.
We can, we will get to the, we will go over staff reports, and it's in the staff report from our director.
And I can tell you a little change from that when we get to that part now.
Okay. So, agenda changes. We are going to table an unfinished business, employee handbook two, business plan review, Clover Valley proposal review, and the budget review. That's all going to be tabled. Also, new business interim director review, review of district bylaws, hiring new director, contract considerations. Again, all that has to be tabled till hopefully a meeting next week, but we will do staff reports. Okay. Did anyone sign up for public comments? Chris, did you?
No, I normally jump in under Clover Valley.
Okay. Did you have a public comment there, ma'am? Okay. I love this sign. It's a beautiful sign, isn't it? Yes. Okay. So, first, we'll go to the approval of minutes, and we have five sets of minutes from Commissioner Harden. Thank you so much for getting those done. And what I would recommend, I have changes on almost all of them, so if you would make a motion for each one to be accepted as written, then I'll tell you what my changes are, and you can decide to accept those or not, and we can go on from there. But do each one separately if you would.
Okay. I move that we accept the five sets of minutes that are on the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
No, that way we can get it the way you want it.
Thank you. Do each one separately if you would. It's actually a little easier if you, but when there's changes to be made, it'll be easier if you just say the August 9. Okay. Do you have a different motion to make?
Yes. I move that we accept the minutes for August 9, 2018.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. So, I have a comment. The, at the beginning, you said the meeting was called to order at 8:45 PM. I'm pretty confident that was 6:45 PM, and I would bet anything that Sean said 18:45, because he often does his marine speak. So, anyway, if we could change that to 6:45. And also, we talked about, in the minutes, it talked about, you know, the motion was made by Commissioner Hollis, we approve option one, and then we talked about concept D and concept C and D, and those are not defined anywhere. Option one, concept C, concept D, and so we say we accepted these, but it's like, we don't really have proof of what we accepted. So, maybe we need a discussion among us. Don't, to me, I always, whenever I would put something in the minutes like that, I would always put an, you know, attachment A or B, so that you could, you could see what they were. Is that, is that wrong? Is that too anal, and it's fine to say it like this? Or?
Well, I think it's, I do think you're right, that it's helpful to refer and show what.
Okay. Because you did that in another one. Okay. So, I would recommend that we have for that, every, for option one and concept C and D, those are the three things that you, we actually talked about, that were approved of, those need to be added as attachments. And if you don't have those, I'm sure I do somewhere in my paperwork. So, if you could go back and look, and just, so add, so for that, I would say the amendments that I would recommend that you make are is change the 8:45 to 6:45, and add two, three attachments. Option one, concept C, or actually, it's, the concept A, B, C, and D was all on probably one document, that was four pages or something. So, two attachments, the options, and then the concepts. Would you like to make such an amendment to your motion?
If I'm understanding, I need to understand.
Yeah.
Okay. It says we approve option one, and that's not under discussion, right?
No, other than, we don't know what option one is.
Okay. So, option one.
As an attachment.
Give attachment.
Yeah.
Do attachment. So, I will amend, let's see, do I need to amend?
Yeah.
The moment?
Yes.
I will amend the approval based on changing the meeting, the time of call to order to 6:45 PM, and doing an attachment to show what option one was, the options that were on option one.
And concept C and D.
And concept C and D.
Do I have a second of the amendment?
Just a second.
Okay. So, it's moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of Thursday, August 9, 2018, as written, with the change to the time of the call to order, and adding attachments of option one and the concepts, C, at least C and D. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, that was ugly. Okay.
I move that we accept the moments, the minutes, for Wednesday, October 3, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
So, it's, go into discussion on it. In talking about the preliminary budget, it says, discussion was had, so interim director Rex Coriel will be able to provide a budget. I did not understand that sentence. It's under the preliminary budget. Commissioner Singleton presented it. Discussion was had, so interim director will be able to provide a budget for commissioners to review at next regular meeting.
So...
Do you remember what you meant, or what that means? Sorry.
That's what I meant. You're asking for details here.
Well, I just, I don't understand it.
Okay. So, it's October 3.
Or, because it's like, if we delete, discussion was had so, then I understand the sentence completely. Interim director Rex Coriel will be able to provide a budget for commissioners to review at next regular meeting. That makes sense to me, if we just delete, discussion was had so. It's just with those words, I didn't understand what it meant. That's all. Do you see where I'm talking about?
Yes, yes. So, you just want to, the preliminary budget presented by, was presented by Commissioner Singleton.
Right.
Discussion. Well, how about I, we just say Director Rex Coriel to provide a budget for commissioners to review.
I'm good, I'm good with that. It does. I just didn't know if the, I wasn't sure, the way it's worded, it's like, we had to discuss it so that Rex could provide it, and it's, I didn't think that that was...
Interim Director Rex Coriel will provide a budget for commissioners to review at next regular meeting.
Okay. Thank you. So, you move that we make that amendment?
Yes. I move that we amend the Wednesday, October 3, 2018 minutes to change the, under the heading preliminary budget, to read, preliminary budget was presented by Commissioner Singleton. Interim Director Rex Coriel will provide a budget for commissioners to review at next regular meeting.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes Wednesday, October 3, 2018, as written, with the change to the 2019 preliminary budget line that we have discussed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair goes aye as well. All unanimous approval. November 15.
I move that we accept the minutes for November 15, 2018.
Second?
Yes, second.
Discussion? So, in the voucher review, you have the numbers 8037 to 8042 through, the way we actually always do it is, instead of all those four numbers, you would just put all 8037 to 8053, like I have written here. Let's see.
Yes, yes.
And so, I, I don't remember ever, ever, ever doing it the way that you wrote it here. So, I, for some reason, you wrote it, you know, I don't know why you did it this way. But...
Okay. So, we want 8037 to 8053.
8053.
8053, yes. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, since you're right.
Because I was here, I believe we did split those, because there were some things that were missing.
In November?
I'm pretty sure we did.
There was one time.
There was a reason we, I remember being present for, we had to do it in a long time. It's like that, so.
There was one time like that.
Then maybe this, because I have to admit, I looked, I looked for my minutes, and I couldn't find them.
You weren't present.
Oh!
You weren't here. I've been looking up top, you're not even, oh, all the, sorry.
Yeah, see, it says I was here.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was like, Holly, it was Holly.
I will tell you what, I, I will go home and, you know, because you wrote it this way for a reason, I think, but it's like, I, I couldn't find my minutes, but that's because I didn't look very hard. So, I will tell you what, can we table this one? I'll go back and find my minutes and look at them, and see if that's, thank you from the audience, it's like, I have a vague recollection now. So, is that okay? We'll table this, this motion for the November 15 minutes until we get resolution, and I promise, I will look and find it by the end of this weekend and get back to you, Pat. Okay?
Okay. So, you know, before, when I talked about, when I did minutes, this is, I was never sure if I was supposed to make the corrections, or if they were going to be done here at the office.
You make them, and then send them to admin, and then they will put them, do whatever it is they do with them. But yeah, you make, you make the corrections, because you have a nice clean, you have it on your thing.
Right, right.
And that way, it'll be clean and final on your machines.
Yes, yes.
So, yeah.
That's good.
Okay.
Okay. So, that one we'll table. I move that we accept the minutes for Thursday, April 25, 2019.
All right. Discussion? And I actually have no comments on this at all. It was perfect. So, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes for Thursday, April 25, 2019. Any other discussion I should, I should ask, but, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. We've got one more set, I think. Yep. May 16.
Yes. I move that we accept the minutes for May 16, 2019.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes for Thursday, May 16, 2019, as written. Discussion? Okay. So, this one also had the vouchers weirdly blocked out, and that was why I wondered if, why this one was like that. But you have 8151 to 8156, 8152 separately, then 8157 to 8180, and since they're all, there's no missing numbers, it should just be 8151 to 8180.
No, now I know.
Okay.
This one is because we did not approve the 8152 before.
No, that was, 8145 was the missing one. 8145 was the one that we did not approve for in April, and we were supposed to look at in May, because we didn't, we didn't understand 8145. I can't remember what it was about 8145, but that was the one that was, that we did not approve in April. Oh, here, right here in the April minutes that we just approved. It says, it was decided withhold approval of voucher 8145 to May.
So, so then, the 8152, sounds like it needs to be changed to 8145.
Okay. So, I would say, then 8145, put them in numerical order, and then 8151 to 8180, because the, you go 8151 to 8156, 8157, so there's no missing. See what I'm saying?
Okay. Okay. So, so 815...
8145.
8145.
Comma, 8151 to 8180. I'll give you my copies when we're done.
Okay. So, okay, so it's, it should read, expense vouchers 8145, comma, 8151 to 8180.
Okay. Do you wish to ma, I didn't have any other changes. Did you want to make that an amendment? Amend your motion?
Yes, I would like to.
Do I have a second for that amendment?
Yes, second.
Okay. So, it's been, any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes for Thursday, May 16, 2019, with amended voucher review numbers to 8145, comma, 8151 to 8180. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, unanimous. Thank you. Voucher review. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I move that we approve of expense vouchers 8258 through 8300, in the amount of $47,064.26, and transfer from M&amp;O to payroll in the amount of $33,220.64, for a total of $80,284.90.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the expense vouchers, and I'll go into all the numbers after we talk about it all. Discussion?
Anything jumping out to you?
I have many questions.
I may notice that the hot tub, the recoating of the hot tub came out of this one of the thing.
Yes. What's the public records, is this you, Hoffmeyer, or is this your dad?
It is me, yes.
And it's, what's...
It is, what it is, is it is all of the, it's all the original ASPRs and the blueprints for the building. So, there are those hundred, probably, probably a thousand draw-ins.
Okay. And we got that from the city, and we had to pay them?
Yes.
That absolutely makes sense.
We used to have, we used to have to go to the city, there was times, we had to go five times a week to look at draw-ins.
Okay.
And it was getting pretty hard to us.
No. Good, good, good. No. Money well spent. I just was like, wait a minute, if someone's giving us a public records request, they're supposed to pay, but no. Good, good, good.
Where it all started, this is funny, where it all started is the state and the contractor wanted us to have those on site before this whole project started. Well, the city, they gave it their best, but we didn't get them until it was all done.
Okay.
And when he says we, he's really talking about him.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is the box still in the fishbowl?
Yes.
So, you have to look at the draw-ins on your way out, because they're stacked up in the fishbowl, about that big.
I believe you. So, when we do the, you know, the money part up here, Mr. Director, and it says, IS, Island County Treasurer, Woodby Island Bank Deposit, is that all money from, that people have given us here? Because then they have the July 19 prop tax distribution, so the money we get from the, from the county is usually that, correct?
Right.
The other money is money that came in through people paying stuff?
Right.
Okay. And I don't know why I've never asked that question up till now, but it's just never occurred to me to ask it. And echo engineered, it's like eight, $8,500 for something, back in the beginning of July.
It's either the, it's either the, it's either the 20-horse fan motor that runs the entire building, or the variable speed drive that controls that, the 22.
Okay. Okay. So, it's one of those motor things.
If not both, I don't recall. It might be both, that one. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Guess it's the both, isn't it?
Northwest Mini Storage, $140. What do we, what?
We have a storage unit that we have moved a whole bunch of our records that are required to have, because we couldn't...
There's nowhere else to store them?
Exactly.
So, are we going to be paying $140 a month to store?
Well, I think there's a, I don't know exactly, but I think it's less than that the first was, you know, initial.
Administrative fee?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you, because this was the first, we haven't had this before, right? I mean, this is something new.
I believe, I might be wrong, but I believe the, I believe the ministries thing got caught up in the whole computer bill thing, and I think that that was for almost three months, if I...
I think he's right, because I...
Oh, okay.
I think it's closer to $300.
Credit card, when we were doing the May 9 thing, with Kelly Williams and Fox and...
Okay. Would you just check for me and tell me what the monthly rate is? Because it's like, 140 a month is, seems, you know, if it's $40 a month, $45 a month, I'm okay with that. You know, it's like, it's money well spent, so that we have somewhere to store the records.
I just remembered the storage, your bill, it's like, I don't know the answer to that. So, I think that's what happened.
Okay. Let's see. Sorry, I ran through this.
It was at least two months, if not three, though.
Okay.
I did have a question on the Heritage Bank. Is, what are, what does this settlement, is that just charges that are made, or, you know, that are made on the credit card? That's what all of those are?
Okay. I did not have any other questions on the vouchers. Did you have?
No, I think that answered them all.
And you didn't have any?
No.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve expense vouchers 8258 to 8300, in the amounts of $47,064.26, and movement to the payroll account of $33,220.64. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I say aye, so unanimous approval.
Thank you.
All right. And so, we are going to table everything else, new and old business, good and staff reports. Yeah. Well, oh, did you want to?
Um, I knew Chris wanted to jump in there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I see, I see one of our old employees here, too. Curtis, what are you, what are you there on behalf of? Were you, were you wanting to give a public comment, or?
Oh, yeah. Well, I have obviously, so, I don't know, middle of July, I think years ago, I hired for a certain age or something like that, kind of what it was called, was not WSA. I applied for the application, got an interview alone, sat down with the director, the appliance director, offered me the job, you know, said, sure, yeah, of course. Well, I came here to see if we could work out how I was to have a regular job, you know, and I figured out. Two weeks waited, three weeks waited, and came here five times and asked, what's going on with it? Always were asked, well, can we return your number, can you get back to us, something like that? Do you have any application on file? Well, sure. Never heard a thing. I gave up. So, I come here and find out, why are we offering people jobs and then not getting back to them at all? Is it that poor communication? Was there something else? I really don't know. I know how closely this works with the public, and I think, you know, it's pretty important you have good communication with the public, especially when you hire, offer somebody the job. Do I want to work here now? I don't want to work for a place that they can't even, you know, get back to me and put a job down. So, I'm just looking to...
Would you, would you be able to figure that out?
Sure.
Hey, thank you, Curtis. Hey, Curtis? Do you have, do you...
Well, as if you have not, I don't know. I've actually taken a lot of times for that. I'll see how you guys can figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
Well, what you just talked was...
Can we, can we, because that really wasn't, right now, we're still on...
Oh, yeah.
Clover Valley.
We're on that, yeah. So, let's go to Clover Valley.
I thought he might be here for program development, so...
Good thought, but, you know, I'm glad that he didn't have to wait any longer. That would have just pissed him off. It was bad enough that he, sorry, bad enough that he, he had to, you know, sit through the...
Technical...
The really boring stuff that we do. But he wasn't here when we started, so, you know, he wasn't here for public comments. All right. So, let's go to the committee reports, Clover Valley Committee.
So, I'm sorry to miss loud, because I was traveling. We were talking about potentially trying to get some concrete donated, have we, my first question is, and I'm asking Shane essentially, is there, has there been any work on any of that? You know, I, I've asked them if they'd talk with their corporate. And we haven't heard of that. They called them, that's all I've heard so far. And that's who? Is that with Craig? No, that was, that was actually for the lumber home frontier. Oh, okay. As far as the concrete, I think if it was formed up, I'm sure that we could get it, even if it was in two pores, because there's always a yard or two on the back of a truck at the end of the day. That's what they make those ecology blocks out of. So, it might just need an extra expansion, do it in the middle or something. I'd hate to, I'd hate to get it all formed up and have it sit there with the chance of it getting damaged, right? Prior, you know, so...
Is it one creep that much that you couldn't...
So, I do have a bid from somebody that, a proposal, and with form, and supplies and materials, and they were donated, with 1.5 yards of concrete, they're roughly estimating total cost of about $572.91.
$572.91?
So...
The...
And I can forward this to, to Rex.
Yeah, forward to Rex, because Rex has the authority to say yes on that, so...
I'm going to give it in a text message, Rex, because I think for text, I'd be like that.
Not everybody is.
And that's, it's easier than, and there it is. Look at that.
Okay, cool. You got anything else from Clover Valley?
Just want to learn more about the lumber piece, and really, if you can maybe pursue that a little bit, we really would like to utilize that permit that the Boy Scouts have put in. It was an Eagle Scout project.
Right. I thought...
And it's good for two years, so it's going to expire in May of next year, essentially. And we just want to make sure we utilize that permit, since it was paid for, and we just go it down. And we'd love to get that lumber donated. I know that Brad said he would help if we, you know, have everything lined up on that most regards, so that's for the... John, the manager of the lumber frontier, has the lumber package. I know he's talked to corporate a couple times. I think if you stopped in and talked to him, it might help. I'll try. I, this is so tough with my schedule, it's really rough trying to get, broken away with some of that, so... The phone would work, I can say he already has his lumber package. If you could call him on the phone, even, it would probably help. Will you text me his contact information?
Yeah.
I will make it a point to go sell myself.
Did you guys see the article about Clover Valley in the paper? The baseball fields, really long, great detail.
Oh, was that in the today's?
Um, it was probably about 10 days ago, maybe, even. I'm sure you saw it, but it talked about adding the extra field, the Cal Ripken League, the high school getting to develop their program because of that new field that Brad so, you know, um, he said it worked so hard, and I just thought it was really great. I mean, we should honestly put it up right there somewhere, but it, it really is good for the district, and I saw it, and I just wondered if you'd all seen it.
I hadn't seen that, no.
And how this, you know, is a piece of the puzzle that people tend to forget. You know, oh, it's just a pool, well, no.
Yeah, I, I like that suggestion, Mr. Director, if you want to find somebody who gets the paper and get them to-
And realize how much those guys have done.
We, we have talked about this, so-
I'll get you a copy, I'll get you a copy, and we'll put it right-
I know, that'd be great, I think it should be-
Maybe we should have a Clover Valley one, you know, or, or just a dog.
At least not exclude them from, you know, and there's a big blank space, that'd be perfect for-
Yeah, I saw it, I was really, I was proud that we were able to-
We can shrink this one.
Facilitate that.
Sorry.
Okay.
He's just trying to get trouble, Chris.
No, I'm-
All right, anything else from Clover Valley? Thank you so much. Do you have anything for, I, you, I know you just got back from vacation, so I don't think you have anything on the community action board. And program development, I don't even know who's on that. Are you in program development? Have you developed any programs? Sorry.
Certainly not computer programs.
Do you have anything for the action item review? Mr. Director?
No.
Okay. And then, so, the unfinished business, new business, all going to be tabled. Staff, turning to staff reports. And I will tell you, I read through them on a computer, but I didn't, I didn't get them, and that is something that, those should be included in the packages that we get.
You should have it here. Here, here is one.
Okay, well, then it's probably, it's probably with this stuff. What I'm saying is, it should have been-
There's a copy.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, I didn't give it to you.
It wasn't.
No, it wasn't in the folder yet.
It wasn't in the folder.
There.
I'll sell you.
Forward waiting to comment on that, I would like to say so much, I like the, the financial report that was kind of in the boxes. For me, that was way easier to read. Do you know which one I'm talking about?
This one, or?
No, no, no.
Oh, the PDF one. Yes, the second box I clicked on. Yes, I seen that. I just thought it showed up differently on my phone.
Okay, does anyone have any? I, I very much appreciated the detailed staff reports. Thank you so much for yours and Jen's and, and Matt's comments on what they, what they did, and also Julie's data. Although, I did have a question on, it says, August 2019 attendance report. And is, should that be July 2019's? Because it's the, today's the 22nd of August, so it's obviously not all of August.
See, and then it said July somewhere else, I see.
Yeah, it did say, it did have July, so I think that's July, right? It's just, that was just a typo. And, oh, I will mention, everyone's on report except for me for not going up to the Heritage Banks slash Wiby Allen Bank to sign. Did you sign yet?
No, I gotta go to.
Both of you need to sign, and so do the other, Commissioner Shingleton and Commissioner Merrill. It's like, they said, they're still waiting on signatures from Commissioners Harden, Hoffmeyer, Merrill, and Shingleton. So, I went and did it last week when we were supposed to. Exactly. We're the only, and it's like, and the problem is the paperwork expires. So, please, 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 next time you're in town, swing by. And you haven't been here, Pat, so you're excused for not getting it done yet. But you can go, they have the paperwork at the, not at the big Heritage Bank, but the one that's next to Gerald's Jewelry.
Yeah.
Okay? And you could get some barbecue while you're there.
So, first, and it's the first desk, I should go in the door to-
I, I know, I'm already on their assigned card for there, for something else.
That's really important, because we're, we're, there are some places where we can't do any business at all.
Yes. Yeah, and it's, it sounded like it's caused us some financial issues, so. And I love that, your buddy Punch.
That's pretty cool.
That's a torquey name, but you're just, you described it very well, thank you.
That's what happened.
Oh.
That's the real story, I knew it.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else on staff reports? And we were going to talk about something.
We were talking about the hot tub.
Oh, that's it.
And we might be able to piece it together, have some of the story too, see what you got, I guess, on the hot tub.
Okay, well, so, so here's the things I want to add to the reports. One is the hot tub, especially because we had asked. I seriously am having trouble because of my fall. I mean, things are not processing right, so, excuse us. But, the hot tub, well, we discovered a number of things. One is that the two motors in there are shot. So, we're going to have to replace the motors, the chances are probably good that we'll reduce to one motor. Our filtration system, the large filtration, sand filter in there, also is shot. I, I don't know how they got it in there, I think they must have built a room around it, because it's, I mean, seriously, it's so much wider than the door is, and the wall is exactly the width of the door, so you can't do what we did back here and cut a thing in it. So, what we've talked with Wayne about is doing two smaller sand filters that will fit in there. So, that'll add, you know, two, that'll add to the class, plus the motor. What's the other part of it?
Trying to roll, I'm trying to roll, so Wayne, when he left Anacortes, when Wayne left Anacortes, the owner of WMS, he called me about six o'clock. He said, so-
And Wayne is the contractor?
WMS Aquatics, they did all the pool.
Oh, okay.
He said, um, so he was going to send us a quote for a five-horse motor that would run the, would run all the jets. A two-horse motor pump that does all the circulation, the two sand filters, and this is new, but he said there's no way that the boiler for the hot tub's going to work. That said, he said, all in total, he hasn't sent the quote off yet, he hasn't researched, but he said all in total, he thought, including the labor, was probably around $10,000.
Wow.
So, that, and-
No, that's what, my thoughts exactly, could be so much worse, and it's like-
I was expecting that, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was expecting, you know, 30, exactly. It's like, everything's always $30,000. Yes, but, but you get how many comments, and so many people, this is, this is why they- Yes, they are, so, we have to get it fixed, so, you know.
In winter, we'll be-
Well, and the funny, well, the funny thing with the boiler, because I'm like, oh, shut the front door, Wayne. He's, no, it's not that bad, he's like, he's like, you know, for everything, it's probably going to be $10,000, including labor. He's like, I'll get you the official numbers. He's like, but the, he said the boiler would pay for itself in three years.
See, and that's, yeah, by getting rid of the big, old, old thing and buying a new, smaller, more economical or efficient, it, they will, you know, we'll stop using so much-
Get the old sand filter out.
So is all.
Yeah, we're trying to get it out.
I just wanted to make sure.
Even I knew.
Is it really original, can we auction that? Just nostalgic, there might, you never know, right?
I think they probably, like Rex said, they must have, they must have boomed it in before they put the lid on the space.
Oh, I'm sure they did, yeah, I'm sure they did.
Along with H-pack stuff.
I mean, we have to, we have to cut it, literally, to get it out.
Cut it into like six pieces?
Like a railroad line.
And let's just put them on, you know? We should get one to the road.
Okay, so, anything else, staff reports?
Oh, I just wanted to say, of course, I already worry about my fall. Jenny's husband had surgery this week, so she's been taking care of him. Matt went off to emergency today, he was transported by, you know, so, and Julie has like five doctor's appointments. We're falling apart, folks.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, so, a lot of stress here, just so you know.
Matt hurt here, or is it?
Here, yeah. He's working on the thing to get the chlorinator to the hot tub, got, Harvey started to raise, and he was having heart disease, so Jenny took over, she seems to be here when people are falling apart, and said, you need to, you need to go call the ambulance, and he was off.
Oh, my God.
He's out now, he's back.
He's, he's okay-ish?
Yes.
Okay, good, and we don't need to talk about it in public?
No, no.
You don't know what?
Happened to be here seven days a week, and needed to be here a couple hours before we opened, and a couple hours after we closed. I don't know if he's okay, I don't know how long he's going to be okay, right? So, that's why, that's, that's why, that's why the board authorized the 20-hour assistant, or whatever it was, and hopefully we can get it done quick.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on staff reports?
Did you want me to talk about that other thing with our visitor here, or?
Visitor?
No, no, no.
Just one, one? No, I would, I would not.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't, because it's-
I mean, if he is in the minutes where it's at, it's all he's gonna be.
Yeah. And we can talk, talk about it offline, because it's, um, so, from staff reports, so, let's go ahead and see if we can find a time that we, the three of us like, for meeting next week. Wendy said any night but Tuesday. Is that, can both of you meet next week sometime?
Is this like a workshop?
No, this is going to be, we're going to do, it'll be a special meeting, but we're going to do all of our unfinished and finished, our new business that we were supposed to talk about tonight. But, these are important issues that we prefer, even though we have a quorum, we really want the five commissioners to make these decisions.
I mean, the handbook and any change to the bylaws, probably have four votes anyway, so, yeah.
What?
The handbook and, there was, there was a couple references to maybe looking at the bylaws coming up as well, and it's like-
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Probably have four yes votes anyway on some of those, so-
Believe it or not, you actually, we could take over and change the world.
We could, we could, we absolutely could.
But, but, I don't like to do that, so, um, so, I'm good any night next week.
This is open to the public?
Oh, absolutely.
I, I thought it was, you did say exact.
No, any meeting that there's, unless it's in, what's that one called? Executive session, is open to the public.
Is there, I just wanted to make-
We encourage you to come.
I don't recall, is there all, all, but does from adding public comment to the start of a special meeting? I don't remember.
No.
No.
We can, we can put whatever we want on, we just, we just don't have to.
Loosely followed.
But, because we've, because basically it's, this special meeting's really a regular, half a regular meeting, you know, I will recommend that we put public comments on it.
Yeah, I got every, every day's fine, I would rather not do Friday night.
Okay, you don't want to do Friday, and I don't either, I don't like it. What do you want?
I could do, I could do any other night.
Okay, um, so, Mr. Director, what, do you have any issues with Monday, Wednesday, or Thursday?
I do not.
Okay. How about, would you mind sending an email, or a text, or whatever, to the two missing directors? Commissioners, sorry. And asking them, Monday, Wednesday, or Thursday? Those are good for the three of us. And for the four of us. Is that good for you guys?
If I can make it, I might give it over.
I'd love to be there, I just have a conflict Thursday night, we have Aaron's football meeting.
Well, then there's also the vans.
So, not, Monday or Wednesday, then?
Welcome back to-
Monday or Wednesday. And I would say, 6:00, 6:00 PM, 6:30? Say 6:00 PM, whatever.
Six.
Is, okay, so, yeah.
And no, you don't have to come.
Merrill's daughter isn't, she's in Anacortes, not O'Carver, that's what it's-
Yeah, no, we're, we just said-
The school stuff, I, I don't know if anybody's got freshmen, but the O'Carver School District starts ramping up this week, really, but next week for freshmen and new students.
Oh.
As well, so, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, and we said not Thursday for whatever it was, the thing that she had, so, well, we won't do Thursday, so it'll be Monday or Wednesday?
Wednesday's better for me out of those, but-
I like Wednesday better, too.
Just because Monday I have an AA obligation, and I, and I won't be back necessarily at times.
We're trying to educate ourselves.
Why don't we suggest Wednesday?
They're not here, we can wait today.
Okay.
Is there a way that, and I know, I don't know if it's, we're privy to it or not, are these things that you guys are reviewing, are they available to us yet?
Oh, um-
Julie and I, to kind of review the handbooks and stuff?
Actually, because you are running for office, I don't have a problem with having them be made available to you. We get them, we get them forwarded to us on email as well, and then they make hard copies for us, because we're old and we prefer hard copies.
I understand you've got a copy made for me, but just to-
Yeah, no, if they-
A PDF would be forward, just so I can kind of be privy to the conversation?
Yeah. No, super.
It's hard to pick them all when you get your ketchup.
And that's why we try and get them, so for those of you who are going to be elected for sure, and may be elected, we try to get them the Friday before the Thursday meeting.
And I would also suggest you page number this, page number the minutes, because as somebody, it's taking me like six months to figure out, following you guys who are talking, right? So, you're like, oh, budget report, treasure report, page one, treasure report.
And if you're sitting here, you go, oh, that's on page 13.
No, I, that is a-
That's a good idea.
And it's just an easy vote.
You guys should get on the board.
I've sat in that seat right there many times or others, so, yeah, no.
All right.
Been there, done that.
Okay, so we talked about the meeting, and so, if you would give your email addresses to the director, he will make sure that you get copies in advance. We don't have a problem with giving people the stuff in advance at all.